Selecting special meeting, April 25th, 2024, 6 o'clock. Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should tie a string so you can pull yourself.
Okay.
First up is discussion or recommendation for appointment of new highway superintendent. You guys had time to go over the videos and all that again, I did too. Open discussion and then a nomination.
I talk a lot, so I'll defer.
I think we all kind of know what choice we're going to make. But it's, we just have to realize that with the candidates we have, as I stated before, they both had strengths, but they both had weaknesses. And we're doing our best to weed through it all and come out with the best appointment that we can come up with for the town. And that's where I am right now.
And the only thing I'll throw out there is there were third option that we're not considering.
Yes.
Which would be to reopen.
And go out for bids again.
I, I would suggest Karen Harper, I would suggest possibly looking at the process to not have it be open meeting interviews by having a smaller committee make recommendations and weed through. Because I think it definitely made a difference. There were some things I would have liked to have dug into, but I feel like it's incredibly difficult to do that in a public
Forum.
Forum and nobody, even in a public role that's not elected, I think should be put in that position where it could be embarrassing and so I feel like that made it harder for me to be confident in either candidate. Whereas when we did the fire department, I, I just felt like that we really could ask tough questions and reach out to, to people associated with them to then make a recommendation to the board and we did. We made a recommendation that none of those candidates.
Right, and we went back out again for looking for another member. But we, the only unfortunate thing was when we didn't back out to publicize for the opening, we didn't get it, we only got one response. Out of all the ones that we had, only one person responded back and we got no extras.
Yeah.
So we ended up with only one person to introduce to the board. So there's a danger in not going out, but there's also a danger in going out. We could end up with no one by the end of June and with Kevin leaving by early July. I don't want to have a blank position there.
I do know he did send us an email three or four weeks ago maybe, saying that he was willing to stay on in a part-time capacity.
20 hours a week. Until we found somebody.
We have two candidates, we interviewed them twice.
And I'm not comfortable with either one.
They're not comfortable with either one, okay?
And one that I might be, I have questions that I don't feel I could in good conscience ask in a public forum.
Yeah.
Actually, I would say that for two of them. That I would like to ask more questions, but I don't think it'd be right. And this is just such an important position. I wouldn't want to set anybody up to fail.
We wouldn't be setting anybody up to fail because there's a six-month probationary period that goes with this according to our regulations. So if we set out certain goals, objectives and training, it has to be done. They get six months proof to us, they can do the job.
And all of that would have to be in public meeting?
Performance evaluation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're back again.
There's
Yeah.
I know what you're getting at, there's no way to do that, you have to do it in public session.
Yeah.
And I know the candidates feel under the gun.
Yeah.
And I've been through plenty of myself and I know exactly what that feels like.
Yeah.
But that's the system and that's what we gotta do.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna fold under pressure there, what are you, what are you gonna do on the job? And you're gonna come before us with something or before the town meeting with something or meeting. But I also think it's, it's incumbent upon the board to give clear direction to the departments. That department's no different than the other two. You know? I don't think we're gonna get anything fantastic by going back out again. If you look at the area towns that have had over a year, a position open for superintendent. East Perfield just filled this. The, he's, he's Perfield, right?
West, west.
Or Perfield.
Perfield.
Perfield. That was a year. We have one candidate that we really don't know much about. We have another candidate that we know a lot about. It's always hard when you have an internal candidate. You know? But you gotta think too that when Kevin was out with medical issues, he was running the jobs.
I, I don't believe the interviews disclosed that.
No, but
No, it did not.
This is knowledge that we
I, I, I mean, I have knowledge that would cause concern for one of the candidates. Outside of an interview. Based upon my official role with the town. But so that, that would go in the wrong direction for me. If, if we do anything outside of the interviews.
Be quite honest with you, I like to promote from within when we can. You work at a job 10 years. You wanna look forward to something. Right? This is an opportunity for someone to come up and someone behind him to come out. Otherwise, why bother working yet? It sure as heck isn't the pay and the benefits. You know, what, what else can we offer? There's no growth to move within. That's how we lose people, that's how we've lost a lot of people. Yes, Fred?
Fred Gervin, very rote. I just wanted to turn back the clock to when Kevin took over as highway superintendent from West Welly. He had zero experience, I don't even think he had a hydraulics license. He came to us as a truck driver. And he was given the opportunity with West Welly's help to actually work into the position and was able to learn from him exactly how the job is, how to do the bids, how to apply for grants, how to manage payroll. Although the, the department wasn't as big back then and there probably wasn't as much to it. He was afforded that opportunity by having Wes stay on for however long it took. I think it was what, six months, Lucy? I think you and I are probably the only ones that know this.
That know that, yes.
But that's exactly how it went down, Kevin had no knowledge of how to handle the job himself. But was afforded the opportunity to work with the previous highway superintendent to get used to, you know? So that's just, you know, my two cents as far as the candidates are concerned. I do agree with you, Don, that you should hire from internally and it's, it's worked out in the past. And you're right, I work in a place for 10 years, if there's no upward mobility. So
the other thing is, we don't have water and sewer.
Right.
So we don't need an engineer.
No, we do not.
We need someone that can handle the roads, keep them fixed, cleaned, plowed, the equipment running. And the internal candidate has done all that for 10 years.
Yeah.
So
But that's what, right, that is what they're doing now, we're not hiring a foreman, we're not hiring a one of the two positions we have right now, we're hiring a director.
A working director.
But a director, a director responsible for not leadership by team, not deferring leadership decisions, but by being confident to make a decision in the moment without any prompting, without reaching out to area towns. That's not what we're, we're not hiring somebody that needs those things, we need to hire somebody who can, who has demonstrated that they are comfortable to be a leader and make those tough decisions. And based upon the interviews, I didn't see that. With prompting, it was a little bit better in the second one. But I would say when the answer was given that the responsibility was deferred, that was concerning.
I agree, but you know, the, the same with Fred, we went through it with Kevin and in, he needed help for the first several months until he learned the process and learned being able to be the leader. He was not a leader when he came on board, but he learned to be one. And, and it is something that can be taught. And needs to be experienced and if they're not seen to have the experience, it's difficult. But if you're saying that it's probationary, no matter what, for the first six months.
Yeah.
We could work on that premise and see if anything better happens.
My only question is, if you're never given an opportunity to gain experience, how does one get the experience?
You could argue that someone's had 10 years to try to get that experience.
Well, that too, if you're allowed to. By your supervisor, if no delegation by your supervisor is ever given and there's no other position of rank or authority within the department, there's no way that you can be afforded that.
The employee is not operating in a vacuum either, he, he sees day to day what goes on, day to day what the superintendent does. So he does have some knowledge. And we do have some time that he could work with Kevin.
I, I think you're questioning to whether he has the demeanor to be a leader.
Correct. Because he, there's been opportunity. And then it, I think decisions wouldn't be the decisions that I would have made.
Right, and I agree with you on some of those, I, I know a couple that
So
has to think more clearly.
And not be influenced.
And not be influenced, I agree.
May I please? Barbara Pucci, East Hill Road East. And I have no feedback on the candidates or hiring practices like promoting from within, but it sounds like you're lowering the requirements for the job. And if you do that, you really should look at the job description and make the changes to those job descrip, the job description and put it out to post again, because there could be other people don't meet the requirements of management experience that would have applied had the job been open to, open to somebody that didn't have that management experience.
I mean, the, the reason, the, the questions that I came up with were to try to be objective based upon the interview, not based upon where their home address is. And so from just that and looking at the job description, which was provided, I, I feel like we're wa, we're stepping back from an objective process and giving preference because of somebody, I mean, was it ever gonna, did anybody who didn't live in Oakham ever have a chance?
We advertised, everybody had a chance, we had two other candidates that we interviewed.
We could have just made this an internal only.
We could have. We didn't.
But I, I heard you say we should be trying to promote from within, if that was the original perspective that you had, I don't know that anybody who wasn't from Oakham ever had a chance to get your vote.
Everybody would have had a chance. This isn't my first rodeo in hiring people.
So wouldn't you hire based upon qualifications and meeting the job description?
I weigh everything. External candidate versus internal candidate, what the pros are here, the cons are here, I'm weighing all of that stuff together. But I also know that you gotta give people the opportunity to show what they can do. Were you a police chief before you became a police chief?
No.
Were you an officer? Were you a, did you have rank and exert that responsibility with subordinates?
Yeah, so naturally with what I was saying earlier, that position he's in now doesn't afford him a chance to become a supervisor, a sergeant, a corporal, a lieutenant or captain or any of those ranks, because there's no such structure in that department.
There are no steps to improve.
Correct, so how would he ever have an opportunity unless the director or the supervisor were to delegate his authority to the subordinate workers? So unless the, the director ever delegates, they're never gonna get that experience. That was the point I was trying to make.
But there were two questions in two separate interviews that asked about other positions in other departments.
Okay, I'm not aware of that.
And in my question of where I prompted, but what about the fire department? There was not a response of how that individual had taken the leadership. And then when the chairman asked a question in the second one, he disclosed that when he had that responsibility, he didn't retain it. So he's had that title, that responsibility, had the opportunity to use it. And at least in the interview, which is all I know, there wasn't any explanation of how it was utilized.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately did not sit in the second interview process and I did not watch it. I was here for the first, first round.
Oh, I thought you were here for the second, okay. So you would make a motion to re-advertise?
Yes.
That's second.
Second.
And it does not mean that the people we've had before cannot reapply. It happened with the fire department.
Yeah.
That's how we got our, a fire chief, because he did reapply. So these people that applied the first time may apply the second time that they wish.
But I think we should look at the job description.
That's, that would be not a bad idea, I don't know if it's the same job description that was given to Kevin when he was hired.
No, 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 these are all brand new, Lucy, remember? Don Jacobs, Don Jacobs, these are all new, brand new.
No, when Kevin applied.
Because I don't think they had one back with Kevin and that's why he got it without having any background.
Right.
I, I think that job description has i- it sets high expectations. And so that's, I went in it literally, looking to check those boxes. And maybe it doesn't need to be if there are, if there is opportunity and we're not concerned that there would be harm by anybody without any, without the experience. But I, I am concerned that we are a part-time department head overseeing this department.
That's just this department.
I know, but this is the biggest department and, and it is, it engages in the, well, it engages in unsafe activities like the police department, like the fire department, but we have tried and true leads of those departments.
Motion on second. Re-advertise. And allow previous people to submit again.
Most definitely. I would put a strict limit on the amount of time that we go out to advertise. I think it was a little long the last time.
Didn't have a deadline.
We did not, and, and that made it seem a lot longer, so I would like to see a deadline put in there so that we have still some kind of a reasonable amount of time to find somebody and appoint somebody.
If you're advertising for a part-time, am I to assume that the position's gonna be part-time supervisor, part-time worker?
Laborer.
Laborer?
Yes.
So would the job description then be revamped to match the qualifications that are necessary for that position?
I think it's already in it.
It's already in there.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's a working, as I shall pull it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
You know, I, I said that too at the second meeting, I, I made sure they understood the difference between that job and being a full-time police chief or a full-time fire chief.
Right.
It, it was intended that they do part-time the paperwork and part-time they're out on the road with staff working on the roads.
Maribel, do you, highway superintendent applications, it, it probably was under a selectmen meeting packet?
It's in one of the packets. If not, I can go.
So
Put it in.
When did we start this?
It'd probably be easier if I just
It's under, isn't it in our book of policies?
I'll just resend it through that email to the packet for today.
We have a nice thick book of all the policies in town.
Oh, the job descriptions?
Job descriptions.
Okay. I haven't seen that.
Because we did it when we were working on the wages with Don Jacobs.
That's right, you weren't on board, yeah, I keep thinking you were part of this.
Yeah.
I was in the audience, or one or two of them.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why, because you were in the audience, yeah, yeah.
Read the job description, oh, of course. It sounds like it's
Right, yeah, I haven't read any of it, so I don't know. One of the problems though is with the job description, it's really big, the pay has to be commensurate with the, the position, which in itself is a problem.
And I, I think too, if we don't change the wages, it's gonna be harder to find somebody truly.
I'd be interested to see what Perfield ended up with.
They, they don't have a water department? Do they?
Water, yeah.
Water?
I thought it was only 80s.
82.
Maybe have a, a light department too.
And, and I, I think their brain tree is 80s.
He, he's a Halloween.
No, I think they made him salary, they increased, he got a, a pay raise
Oh, okay.
Higher than Kevin's current.
Okay.
I would not be surprised, I, I'm figuring most of them do have a higher rate of salary.
And, and they have less roads, I think one less mile.
I was gonna say, it's pretty close, it's pretty close, because we're up to at least 46 now.
We're 49 point something.
That's what they keep saying, but I don't quite believe that yet.
I heard there was something being over that one.
I'll drive around. Because I know there's only 24 poles from here to your place, not 50, because I counted them.
That was interesting.
I uploaded it.
Oh, you didn't?
Must have been happy I called.
In the today's packet.
No less than seven days.
Oh, no less than seven.
No less than seven.
Did you see it?
Where is it uploaded today's?
Today's, it's in a word document, that should be fine.
Yeah. So like, education and experience, it, it calls for a degree? Bachelor's degree in business administration, civil engineering or related field equivalent to a master craftsman or trade knowledge? And then it says a minimum of five to seven years related work experience in the field, hands-on, with a minimum of three years in a supervisory capacity or any equivalent combination of education, training and experience which provides the required knowledge.
This is the part I think that was not handled quite so well. This is the part I think that was not handled quite so well for Harold and the employees that we have now.
Yeah.
This has to be, this is very important, because that's the only way we're going to grow people in that job.
Yeah.
And be able to move them up.
Excuse me.
That's the one on responsible for the development and implementation of employee training.
Oh, the job description.
Yeah, no, but it's something specific in the job, just.
That had been done for Harold.
Oh, which she said, yeah.
Responsible for the development and implementation of an employee training program, including safety methods, environmental compliance, and the safe and effective use of department equipment, vehicles, and supplies. That was a question I attempted to ask. And I just wasn't getting anything tangible. So there's more than just cracking heads. You've got to support. Um, encourage, build a team, and, and, and that's kind of what, where I ended up getting stuck.
And, and that's why, because it's not been done.
And we don't have any place to go for a, a higher position within
Right.
the three-person department.
Not unless we put a form in it.
Well, that's, yeah. Because who is in charge? It, it's just, I need you to be in charge, there's no extra pay, there's.
Well, that's what we said two years ago.
That's right.
That's why we had the foreman's job classifying and agree to it and everything.
But it was never used.
Because I, I really feel like the, the highway superintendent can't live under the belief that they literally have to be available twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That's unreasonable. Even if your salary.
Of course it is, yes.
So somebody needs to know that when the highway superintendent is there, it, it formally legally falls to them. I mean, we, we have two fantastic work reviews under Kevin, there's no question. They are, they are amazing at what they do. Um, but this job description is all about supervision, responsibility for development of, implementation of, planning of. It's very heavy on the non-working, the roads. We need somebody that's leading it. And so if, um, there's other supports to take some of that away, then okay, but we can't run the highway department. No, but none of us has the qualifications.
No, we don't. It's not just.
We can't afford it.
They had those nice.
I'm worried. For the fudge legions.
Okay.
I've seen that advertised on TV a lot. They're expensive. They're big and thick, so you don't go through them.
So if we re-advertise, what are we doing? Ten days, seven days, ten days?
Let's say ten.
Ten.
What do you think? Ten, fourteen?
Two, definitely two work weeks.
Yep.
And then hopefully we have time to come back, review them, and get them in for, and maybe it, it should say that this is a fast turnaround. Um, schedule the interviews.
Yeah.
That interviews will be held, for those selected, will be held on some Friday.
PM or AM?
I mean, the afternoon on Fridays. The best.
For me, it doesn't matter. I can do anytime.
I mean, for candidates, it might be easier, they're working, to come in the evening.
True.
Just my thought. I am not comfortable with the appointing authority screening and then interviewing.
I, I, I agree, the appointing authority in this whole thing makes it more complicated.
Yes.
It does. I agree.
My question, eh, eh, for background and screening, are you gonna do it yourself, or are you gonna?
We have to make a job offer before we can do.
Right.
The rest of it, so.
How does do, like Collins Center, how do they, they're doing digging? Or like the advisory groups would be doing digging.
Part of the packet that the candidate fills out has the authorization.
Yeah, because like even the references.
The thing is, it's, if we do it with the appointing authority, we can't do that.
Yeah.
But if we hired Collins Center to do that, they'll have everything done, the background done.
They do the screening.
Here's your three candidates right here, now you, as the appointing authority, interview those three.
And hopefully they've addressed maybe some of the.
They will address all of those issues, you know.
But like, yeah.
It's money.
I was gonna say, they're not cheap.
Isn't Collins by the state? It's a quasi-state agency? It's through, um.
UMass, I think.
Yeah.
UMass Boston.
Yeah.
Boston, yes.
Mass Boston.
Yeah. We used them for the school department for two years.
I mean, if, you know, that's five or six thousand dollars to do that, we could use the opera money for that.
Could you utilize a detective from a police department?
I wouldn't use anyone within the town of Ocam.
I agree.
So there's no conflicts.
Right.
You know.
So you could use a detective from another department?
Could use a state police. They'll, they'll do it.
Yeah.
You know.
You'll actually knock at doors and ask neighbors and
Yeah.
get real opinions.
I mean, I, I noticed that in the multitude of the five, um, resumes that we saw, which we ended up interviewing all of them that had gotten it in by the time we decided, so there wasn't even a screening out.
No, there wasn't.
Which that could, probably could have been, um, but then they dropped out. Um, but, um, the references were varying. Some had supervisors and some had colleagues.
I noticed.
And I really feel like we're looking for supervisor references, not your, your best friend.
Some had supervisors for whom they never worked.
Yes, yeah. Um, and you could even say that we're looking for, um, reference letters from a supervisor.
That would be quicker if we could get reference letters than having to call them.
Do you want to talk to Collins?
I think that would help us find, avoid any potential accusation of conflict, like. And, and I think, you know, this is, uh, the second highest paid position in town, potentially.
But it's the most expensive department.
Expensive department, it's worth the investment.
Millions in equipment.
And the grants that come in and.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Kevin's have like two and a half million in road money. All right, so we'll do that.
I think so.
Because they'll do the advertising.
And put that on the agenda for Monday to authorize the payment of.
Yeah.
And negotiating the contract. Do we still have time to do that?
I could update the.
Yeah, I mean, it was certainly unanticipated.
Can I make the meeting for six forty-five? Are you guys, oh, oh. I had it, I had it up and running. I wonder where my pen was.
This item we have exec session for preparation. We still need to go into that, because now if we're going outside, we're gonna be talking salaries.
For that, um.
Yes.
I mean, new position, so we're still gonna have to do this.
Do we have to check with FinCom for salaries? They're going to, they're going to be getting a little upset. Our budget is getting so tight now.
I'll, I'll share it under new business, or old business, but I did get, um, the list of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in the average tax bill, and where Ocam is ranked among the three hundred and fifty-one. Um, we are three hundred and third.
Below us?
One of the.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
There are, there are a couple that are lower than we.
By Worcester County, there were three lower than us.
Yeah, yeah.
That's interesting.
We didn't vote, did we?
No, we're still in discussion.
All right, okay. Wait for her to come back.
Okay, we'll follow through with that and see what we come up with for the second round. I'm glad we had the second round of interviews for them.
You know what?
We would not have been able even to make this decision.
I think the best thing, though, was that they spent time with Kevin. Like, that should be a requirement, um, because it shows that they're interested. And, um, although, although we don't get any feedback from Kevin.
We could if we asked him, so, you know, did they understand?
Just have to be in public meeting, which would be kind of awkward if it was an internal candidate.
Well, we can designate one of us to talk to him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to ask him about it.
Yeah.
His interviews, I didn't think.
Yeah, I just heard they went well, um, because I really didn't want to get any more information.
Yeah. I know he did take Harold through the office more than driving the roads, Harold knows the roads by heart. So he did take them into the office and throw them where chapter ninety was, where Massachusetts and all the different things were and how the filing system was set up for him and the computer. So that was, that was stressed for that. And the other guy, I know he also went through it and, because he found that he was still a little lacking his technology and like that. He said it's something he would have had to have learned as well.
You have to hire somebody. No, we can't say that. I think people in their forties and under all had to like build computers so they would have a better understanding probably of technology.
I think that would be.
Oh, really?
Back in the nineties.
Yeah.
I worked with, uh, IBM punch cards, digital punch cards.
Wow.
Yeah.
We programmed CNCs with punch cards and, and tape.
Actually, that's a couple of years before my time.
I used to write DOS.
I did too, I learned how to write DOS.
Yeah, command line.
C colon backslash.
Yeah. Don't just don't do that and put start on star.
Yeah, don't do that.
It was the first thing we learned. Stuck with me all those years.
Yeah, I learned it on Apple. In grammar school, they had some Apple computers that you'd put the floppy drive in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we started to write our own boot disks.
When I became Secretary of State, I actually had a word processor.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Ocam?
Yeah.
Did you have to provide, provide your own?
Yes. My husband bought it for me so I could do better minutes with that. Oh, yeah. So you think I don't know sometimes? Surprising.
Yeah, now you're posting minutes on the website.
Yes.
The world wide web.
Yes. Getting better.
Here she comes. My apologies, in almost three years, first time that I've messed up.
It was an awkward day.
Yes, it's up and posted for seven PM, and I will update the screen outside.
Motion, second.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Next up, Assistant Town Clerk Wages, we never.
We never designated a wage for her and I.
Name your own.
I saw that she had plugged in, I don't know if she's here.
Yes, she is.
But she is, she is.
Hi Karen.
In with us tonight.
So that would be the clerk grade, grade two, step one. Whatever that is, nineteen eighteen.
Eighteen thirteen.
Then the.
The three percent.
Three percent, yeah.
And there is the possibility that there is another position available that might become available, um, further down.
Yeah.
Which would be a different rate.
Yep.
I still think it should be a different rate, slightly higher. She's gonna have a lot to contend with as soon as Edna goes. She's, she's gonna be responsible for the whole thing.
She's ba, she would basically be the interim.
Yeah.
Town clerk.
Town clerk, and if we don't get one before the presidential primaries and elections, or state primaries and, and federal elections, she's gonna be responsible for that too. I don't think that eighteen or nineteen looks too professional.
No, so for now it'd be the step one, plus two grade.
That's no.
I'm not saying a number because I'm not exactly sure.
It's gonna be a minimum of twenty.
I, 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 I would be fine with twenty.
Okay, then.
It's gonna look like it at least has a two in front of it.
Okay, then we can do step two, grade two.
Okay, that's.
That would, that would be in twenty.
Step two, grade two, okay.
Okay.
She's certainly qualified.
Very much so.
Yes, definitely. Motion.
I would move that we, um, set a rate of pay of step to, to grade two, um, for Ms. Harper, um, with a start date effective as soon as possible.
You mean like tomorrow or Monday?
As soon as she's able to.
She's able to, yes, because we have to get prepared for the town elections and to help Edna with that as well. Second.
On the paper.
Aye.
Okay, new business for the board?
I don't have any. I've been concentrating so much on the highway department that I haven't thought of anything new right now.
It's, um, on the agenda for Monday for a vote, um, but I, um, created, I did some arts and crafts today.
That looks pretty. I like the green.
And I bought adobe, so I now made that a green. Oh, yeah, that's green.
Yes, it is, it's green.
Um, and, um, so I have.
Those are green too, lovely.
It's all about making you happy, Lucy.
Very pleased.
So.
That's nice.
So I'll present that on Monday for a vote.
Very nice.
But, uh, participated in Eagle Board Review on Tuesday.
Okay.
Uh, or one day last week, um, and, um, he's an Ocam resident and it's, uh, I'm sure you've done these in the past.
Did you see it? Yeah, I didn't see this, I knew about it.
So I bought fifteen of those, um, covers.
Yep.
Um, and then I bought the, um, that paper.
Eagle Scout nineteen ninety-four. Wow.
July twenty-seventh, especially.
Right near my birthday. Yes.
Okay. Involved business.
Um, we did hear from, um, the website vendor that, um, they will be providing, or, um, a third party will be providing a, um, proposal, um, a new, uh, proposal.
For procurement?
Yeah.
Okay.
And outreach.
No.
No, uh, that's, um. No, that's Civic Plus.
Revised.
Revised.
Revised, okay. S H I.
S H I, and I'll reach out to. I'm so confused. It sounds like we just need a new proposal. But we could reach out to Civic Plus and ask them also to do an S H I proposal, but then you've got two S H I proposals, which all you have to be is a.
I think just for.
Well, whoa, 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 whoa. We don't need multiple quotes.
No, if one is.
This is a state bid.
Right.
Yeah.
And I heard from the OYG today and, and that's what it seemed to say. So. Um, but I'd be happy to ask the one that we, that didn't actually have everything we were looking for to have them provide a quote, but it just seems like we're asking them to do work that isn't needed and.
True, because we really don't intend.
I, I don't, unless they've come up with some new capabilities since we spent weeks looking at it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we'll do whatever we have to do to do it appropriately.
Yeah.
Definitely.
The money's not going anywhere. It's just that we do have to extend a quarter at a time.
Um, for the old.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we have to pay a quarter at a time.
Yeah.
So if, if the other one is done sooner and we decide to shut them off, we're still paying for that.
Right, right. So we just got to coordinate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did get, it'll be on Monday's agenda, but we did get that quote or invoice for the well. Um, I'm not sure, though, that they've gotten their second water test back yet. The first one, I think, was good, but they suggested doing a second one. So fingers crossed because they've already invoiced us in hopes that it's finished. It was about twenty-four thousand.
It's twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-four nine. The current one.
Yeah.
We allocated six.
Well, there was no, it was just like as a pending. There was no final bow or it was just as a placeholder almost, but yeah, six.
But they, they were out there a week straight. I mean.
Well, yeah, they went down five hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
In the rain.
In the rain.
Have they been working on the ballpark? It just looked good today.
The grass is greener.
Yeah.
No, it looked like it had been, like, the diamond had been fitted.
Oh, there was a rake over there. I saw that.
It looked nice when I drove by. Yeah, and the porta potty has been brought in.
Should be coming tomorrow.
It was that?
Yes, finally. So, um, Kevin was very instrumental with that. He ordered, um, he's been tracking them and contacting the um, the shipper and, and, you know, keeping tabs on it. So I do appreciate it. And I know as Parks and Rec does appreciate the help from.
It's great.
You know, and, and not just Kevin, you know, the guys in the Highway Department, you know, will be, I think, putting it together and helping out. So it definitely takes some village.
Yeah.
That a book?
Okay. Anything else under all?
No.
Did you read the email from Lori on the explanation of the twenty-five thousand?
I don't know how money comes and money goes and.
Well, that's why I questioned it to begin with, um.
Eh, eh, what's that account?
It's the overlay.
Yeah.
The assessment overlay.
There was, they reduced it.
Right. So what I looked at was that when they reduced it, that money would go into free cash.
Right.
And she's saying that one of the cells was wrong, so we didn't.
Actually have that much?
Yeah.
But the auditors found sixty.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, Peter was here. Um. Saw him come in.
But I saw him leave.
Oh.
Or he left.
I think so.
And, and they are planning, I think, Monday. Is Monday the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
So that's when they're coming, the state. We don't have a meeting. Oh, we do have a meeting that day.
At seven now.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, there, I sent a proposed, they're proposed, I think it was a let starting at eleven-thirty with you. Um, I mean, I'm sure we can move things around, but it was eleven-thirty until, I think, five-thirty or five. Um, I emailed it this afternoon if I hadn't already emailed it, but I did email it.
Okay.
And it's each of us, Maribel, um, the accountant, um, the treasurer and the finance chair and the principal assessor and the two assessors after the fifth of May.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that's right.
The board members.
Yeah.
So we're scheduled for Monday?
Mm-hmm.
What time?
So there are placeholders, but I think we could negotiate. They, they've scheduled thirty minutes for us. I don't know that it matters who goes in what order. I think they wanted you first.
All right.
Because I haven't appointed that day, on Monday, at one o'clock at UMass.
Okay, so there is one that starts at eleven-thirty to twelve. I don't know if that gives you enough time.
Um, oh, boy, because I know nothing about getting to UMass in Worcester. I've never had to do it before.
Let's see. The other option they said is they could always do Zoom, but I imagine you would prefer.
You think?
I'm just guessing. Um. So eleven to eleven-thirty, Board of Selectmen Chair, eleven-thirty to twelve, Board of Selectmen Member, twelve to one lunch. Um, Board of Selectmen Member, one to one-thirty, Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant, one-thirty to two-thirty, oh, an hour. Um, Accountant, two-thirty to three-thirty, Treasurer, three-thirty to four-thirty, FinCom Chair, four-thirty to five. And, and actually, I think, um, what's, Alan wanted to go earlier. He said early afternoon, so even if you did the four-thirty to five.
That would be better for me.
I'm sure that would be fine. I appreciate them, but they're not great at responding to emails.
That's Monday.
Yeah.
And just so you know, because Lori will be coming in for that, she is going to be emailing all the departments. Letting them know that she's available twelve to two, in case anybody has questions. She just sent me an email just so I can clear the accountant's office. The storage room.
Should they be told that they have like ten minutes each?
Yeah, I mean, she's, I, I'm sure she'll let it known that she's only available until that time, but.
All right, anything else?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Public session?
You get too very. Okay, we are, but, um. The, I believe the board has talked about doing information sessions for the public around the election and maybe the special town meeting. Is anything more happened with that?
We discussed it with FinCom.
Yeah.
We're trying to get them.
Okay.
Together. Aaron had pulled some good things from Paxton.
Yeah.
And that format would work here.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Great.
So we're working on it.
Okay.
And there's going to be some.
Imperative that we do it.
Yes.
And there's going to be some informational coming out also for the Town Hall Study Committee.
I mean, they could be separately recorded.
Right.
And, and put out into the web.
Sure.
Um, doesn't have to be come to a meeting readily available.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be here to record it, so if anybody comes in, they can ask questions.
And that can be the budget introduction. It didn't seem like FinCom was anxious to do it this year. Um, but I think it should be done.
All we need is one of them.
Right, right.
We don't need the full board.
Yeah.
We're just going to be explaining.
Where we're at.
Where we're at, how we got there.
Yep.
Where we need to be.
Yep, because if you look at Rottlands, Paxtons, uh, Westbrook Fields, they all did these education sessions. Yeah.
They had to.
They had to because they're in override talks, a couple of them.
Yeah.
Um, and, but we're in a tight spot.
Now, are they doing this by Zoom?
They did. They were recorded on YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're right, you only need one person to do the presentation on Zoom, then anybody who wants to check in will be fine.
Yeah.
Great, that would be appreciated. Thank you. And the second question is, what are the deadline, what would be the deadlines for a citizen's petition? Or I guess for the election and or for the special town meeting? Is that already passed?
Special in the fall or the?
I'm sorry, annual.
The annual?
Yes.
Okay. The warrant is closed, right? But a citizen's petition, we could take it anytime.
It just needs how many signatures?
I mean, ten.
I think it's ten. Ten or twenty. I would check what I know.
I think it's ten.
So you can take it.
Just before it goes to legal, right? Does legal have to review even the citizen's?
Petition? No.
Wow.
No.
Hopefully before Finance sends out their.
That would be the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
Because I did see Rottlands was posted today, their warrant.
Their meeting is May eleventh.
Yeah, but it was only posted today.
Right.
So you have to post it so many dates in advance, the warrant.
Yeah, so it was posted the twenty-fourth. So it was posted yesterday, then, Rottlands.
I think it's only seven days.
Probably need it by May twentieth.
By, by May twentieth. Okay, great. Thank you.
And Finance hoped, I think, to mail their thing out in the next three weeks, two to three weeks.
Yes, Alan did reach out with, um, to order paper, which I did, ordered more toner, just like they did last year. They, they covered it under their budget just because it'll be a lot of.
Because they don't meet until May first to finalize their budget, hopefully.
Yep.
So it may not make the mailing, but I don't know, does that have to, is there a legal requirement that it be in a mailing?
For them?
For a citizen's petition? Or is it just the financial?
Good question to ask Edna.
Because I noticed, um, on Rottlands, FinCom and Board of Selectmen all reported favorable on everything financial. And then when Planning Board made recommendations, it didn't, didn't talk about that. And there were citizens petitions on there that weren't reported favorable by anybody.
They usually don't on a citizen's petition because they let the citizen explain.
Yeah.
Um, and they'll make a vote at that, at the meeting, but, um.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, anybody on public?
Um, Ms. Harper, she's gone.
I should go into executive session, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one dash two, to conduct strategy session in preparation of negotiation with non-union personnel, Highway Department.
All right, with second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call vote?
Yes, roll call. Hapikowski, aye.
Tess, no, aye.
Langue, aye, aye.
Good.
I'm looking at my name up there. T E S S, comma, N O W. I'm looking at my name up there, T E S S, comma, N O W.
We're out of executive session at seven thirty five. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.